So I've got the signal, we're good to go. Welcome to the Middlesex County Council Meeting of Tuesday, August 30th. And it's great to see everybody here and again, Brad, nice to see you. I'll try to remember to keep looking up towards you, but don't be afraid to speak up if I, if you're trying to get my attention. So I just would like to say, once again, this summer, EMO Conference has been and gone. And it'll be a memorable one for many different reasons. One, which was to being able to attend in person after two years of virtual meetings. This was the first time seeing provincial ministers after the June election. We saw many new faces, but also lots of familiar ones. There are many conversations about various topics. The big three, as always, were housing, transportation, and internet access for all locations in Ontario. But our health system led a large part of the discussions. The county had an opportunity to partner with the city of London, to talk to Minister Jones and Minister Tabula, as well as P A Patrice Barnes, about our concerns regarding social services, childcare, early years funding, housing and homelessness, inland ambulance. The county provided some worthy solutions to these concerns. And I was pleased to help present these. Firstly, we presented ways to improve and modernize land ambulance dispatch. And with options to relieve hospital wait times and offload delays. During our meeting with Minister Jones, we proposed a pilot project that would see paramedics working in a single response unit, respond to lower acuity calls with the goal of assessing the needs of patients by triaging patients on scene, treating patients on scene and referring patients on scene to an MLPS community paramedic. This project is described as Treat and Refer. We also advocated for the province to give paramedics the ability to treat and release on scene or to transfer patients to an alternative destination. Our position at the county is that this pilot project will provide some much needed relief at all levels, including to our MPLS call volumes, offload delays, unnecessary transports and emergency department volumes. We are hopeful that the letter sent after the conference to Premier Ford and the Deputy Premier and Minister of Health Sylvia Jones will continue this conversation. The Western Ontario Wardens Caucus was also well represented at the ministerial delegations. Four priorities were discussed, including affordable and attainable housing in rural areas, implementation of the Western Ontario Workforce Strategy, provincial broadband and cellular infrastructure, and mental health and addictions. These delegations were presented to individual ministers, as well as a multi-minister delegation, but also to the leaders of the NDP, Green and Liberal Parties. Some of the key messaging included sobering statistics. Half of the household incomes across the Wausau region have an average income of less than $80,000. CMHC's maximum affordable home cost is $327,000, while the average home price is $266,000 more than that. Half of the in-demand occupations in the region are in lower income roles. This would suggest that future housing demand will be for lower priced homes. Housing options will need to include a greater number of housing units for people to continue to work in their communities, including co-housing or smaller houses provided at a lower cost. The Wausau region needs innovative housing solutions that can be constructed faster and can accommodate the local workforce needs. Seasonal and migrant workers in particular need to be close to their employment. One-third to one-half of all tenant households are currently exceeding the 30% threshold for houses' house expenses. The higher share of rent paid is proving to be a barrier to households wishing to buy a home. The Wausau region will need more rental options and other options to help transition from renting to home ownership. The housing options should include opportunities to enter the market, to build equity and move up. The housing option should include a greater supply of housing options. These statements give us a great insight to the pressures we are experiencing in this area. The OFA is concerned about the loss of farmland and recommended intensifying. But our rural communities and small urban areas are pushing back about growth in these areas. It is our job to make sure that these facts are presented to residents in a factual manner that leaves our towns and villages a place where all residents have an opportunity to have the quality of life that we all deserve. As Chair of SCORE, joined by Councillor Richards and other members of the board, I attended seven delegations to discuss the concerns of the regional partnership of Middlesex, Elgin, Oxford, Norfolk and Brant. Again, similar issues, as mentioned above, were discussed with some emphasis on transportation. I would also like to recognize that newly elected MPP Rob Flack attended many of the delegations that were in his riding and his observations and questions were well received. I thank all of those that attended, prepared reports and worked hard in the background to give us a chance to make a difference for the County of Middlesex. I'm going to call this meeting to order. And now, is there any provision for disclosure of peculiary interest in general nature thereof? Seeing and hearing none? Business arising from the minutes? None? Okay, then I'm going to ask for four minutes of the July 19, 2022 Meeting of County Council. We have them to be approved and adopted. I'm looking for a mover, councillor Vanderheiden, seconded by councillor Corneliusson, all in favor? So carried, 4B, minutes of the closed session of County Council on June 14th. And the recommendation is that the minutes be as is a, sorry, be approved as presented. Looking for a mover, councillor Smith, seconded by councillor Devitt, all in favor? Okay, deputations? We have several? Not until, okay, inquiries or notices, motion? Reports, moving on to new business, 8A FU Fiber Incorporated Telecommunications Municipal Access Agreement. And that's a report from our county barrister and solicitor, Wayne Meeker. So welcome, Wayne, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Through you to council, FU Fiber is a company that wishes to enter into a telecommunications municipal access agreement, or MAA, with the county in order to install fiber in the county's road allowances, subject to permits. According to FU, its first project will be in Temps Centre. As council is aware, the county uses a form of blanket MAA. Since its adoption by the county, all of the municipalities in Middlesex County have now moved to using the same form of blanket MAA with application to each respective municipality. And with that form being used across the county, it really allows a telecom to have its legal questions concerning an MAA answered quickly and easy in one direct call. And for agreements to arrive quickly and easily to the municipal signatory for endorsement. And the obtaining of permits is also expedited as the necessary agreement particulars in the form require minimal discussion. And once the agreement is endorsed, all a telecom needs to do is simply submit drawings to operations of the applicable municipality and act in accordance with the ultimate permit. And since the county approval of the blanket form of MAA, it has been endorsed by all telecoms across Middlesex County as a form that the industry is happy to sign. And so the recommendation today is that the FU Fiber telecommunications municipal access agreement be approved and endorsed by the county. Subject to questions?
Just, it's, so it's FU Fiber, right? Yeah, okay, just checking. Question, councillor Vanderheiden?
Yes, thank you through the warden. Just a question, like I have no issue with this documentation and the way that we're treating everyone the same across the board. I think it's, it makes it clearer and it's easier for all of us all the way down the chute. My question is around, we're getting a lot of these. And so is there any check? Or is there something we do for the service itself? So this would be FU Fiber or whichever Talco comes forward. Do we do any kind of a background check to see that they've done a good job somewhere else? Or that they have followed through on what they've said? Because I don't want people laying all kinds of things down and then not follow through on what they're doing. And how do we check that they're doing it correctly down our roads? Those are two questions.
Through you, Madam Mayor, to the councillor. That's a bit of a tough one because the telecommunications act, it does give telecommunications providers the right to use road allowances subject to our consent. And then we, of course, use, in these agreements, we have reasonable conditions for our consent. So we give the consent. So in terms of, we don't have a great amount of latitude to go and, you know, reference how well of a job any one provider maybe has done in the past. So that is a bit of a difficult one. I think the best check is likely through the regular permitting process. I mean, if they come through with adequate drawings, I mean, I'm hoping the municipality would be able to tell if it was a good, bad company or otherwise, and maybe that could be addressed through that process. Other than that, you know, we are able to do a corporate records check to see if they are a corporation that's in existence in Ontario. And so we can do that. So I think those are the two items we can use. Other than that, I think just simply just asking them questions is really the only method we have.
A follow-up question? And I don't, I have no reason to believe any of these are suspect. I'm just asking the question. I still am very concerned in rural and smaller urban Ontario, especially in our area where, you know, we're all working really hard for broadband to every single home. And, you know, one, one Talco is putting wire down, then another one's putting a wire beside it, another one's putting a wire beside that. So you've got three wires leading to one small area, but we're still not going to where we need to go. And that's that last mile, that's to the farms, to the agricultural area. So this is where I think my brain is going, where, you know, how do we encourage people to go that extra mile instead of the easy spots? And I guess that's not part of this report, but that's where my brain goes to when I read some of these reports. Because I know what's happening in all of Ontario where they're putting fiber beside it and then beside it, instead of going where they need to go, because that's more expensive.
Through you, I think it's a great comment. I mean, fiber is expanding across Ontario rapidly. And of course, the easiest places to put fiber does get finished first. So for example, typically county roads, then it expands other places. But when you typically, when that begins, usually then it spreads elsewhere. So I mean, we're seeing mass build out in many places across Ontario. So I think the only thing we can say about that is hopefully the installation of initial fiber, you know, furthers more, which ultimately gets larger and larger expansion to more and more particular locations within municipalities is really. I think that is the idea that it will encourage the companies that deal with getting, you know, getting internet from the fiber to the home to commence that and then, you know, reduce pricing over time.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, that we have a bylaw be introduced to authorize and approve the agreement with FU Fiber Incorporated and authorize the warden and clerk to execute the agreement. Mover, councillor Mayhew, seconded councillor Burkhardt-Jessen, all in favor? So carried, moving on now to 8B Ferno Pack Racks. And that's a report from our chief, Neil Roberts, whenever you're ready, chief. Brad, can you hear Neil?
No, I can't hear him, sorry.
They're fixing it, Brad. Can you hear him, Brad?
Councillor, can you hear me now, sir? All right. Thank you, Madam Warden, through you to County Council. So the purpose of this report is to inform County Council of a decision to issue a sole source purchase order. So a bit of background on our stretchers, we have a piece of equipment, it's called a Ferno Pack Rack. And that piece of equipment actually is what we put our cardiac monitors on. And they're secured to ensure that the cardiac monitor, which is a heavy piece of equipment, is on the stretcher out of the patient's way and more importantly, secured while we're in transit. Obviously, when we're in an accident, we want to make sure that that piece of equipment is not moving around. The pack racks that were originally purchased are seven plus years old. So they've undergone some obviously wear and tear throughout time. And we were starting to see more and more of a requirement to examine a repurpose or repurchase of these. Because there are only two manufacturers worldwide for stretchers, we use the Ferno INX stretcher, which council approved. And accordingly, their cardiac monitor device is exclusive to Ferno. And that's the reason for the sole source. We were able to, working with Ferno, to achieve a vendor preferred price, which was a discount. These pack racks are made in Australia. And so we're able to achieve an economy of the purchase of the units as well as the currency exchange at the time. The other reason why we expedited the purchase of this is, as we're seeing with COVID supply chains, the delivery time is roughly four to six months, providing there are no further issues throughout. So we spoke and consulted with the Deputy CAO and General Manager of Finance at the time regarding the ability to move forward with this. The approval was approved by the Deputy CAO. And in doing so, we issued a purchase order for the pack racks for a total of $122,015 plus HSD. This funding will come from the approved 2022 capital budget. So it's within our approved budget envelope. And it was more or less a requirement at that time due to health and safety and ensuring that we replace the equipment without having any failures coming online. Madam Warren, happy to take any questions from council.
Any questions regarding this issue? No, I think chief explained it very well. So we have a motion that the report on the recent emergency purchase of replacement Ferno Pack Racks be received for information. Mover? Councillor Rob, seconded by councillor Elliott, all in favor? So carried, and then moving on to 8C, Middlesex London Paramedic Service Operations Update. And again, chief, the floor is yours.
I'm Warden, and so on this one, I'm going to go through a high level of the report that council has before them. Certainly, if I've missed something that council wishes to discuss, more than happy to. So we wanted to come and Deputy Chief Adam Bennett's with me today. We wanted to come and provide an update to County Council with regards to Middlesex London Paramedic Service and what we're experiencing so far in 2022. Certainly, so far this year between January 1st and July 31st, 2022, we've seen a 6.74% increase in our call demand. And coupled with that as well, we're also seeing an increase in our offload delays, which is nothing new to Middlesex London Paramedic Service. But what I would note for County Council is that in 2021, which is one of our highest years for offload delay hours, we had a total of 17,690 hours. The first roughly six, seven months of this year, we have surpassed all of 2021 in our offload hours, not only in number of incidents, number of hours, but the length of hours. We've seen recently offloads up to 19 hours in length. So obviously, this is a, an issue that we're dealing with and working with London Health Sciences. It certainly is impacting our staff. We recognize that. But I would be remiss if I didn't know, this is not just an issue that's occurring in Ontario. It's occurring in Canada and it's occurring around the world. If you look at media reports, even from the United Kingdom, they're seeing the same issues as well. This is some of the impacts that are coming out of COVID. So certainly, obviously, that is straining our system as well. And we're seeing part of this strain as a result of the health and human resource issues that are being experienced in hospitals and also within ambulance services as well. Obviously staffer been through COVID for the last two and a half years. And so there is obviously burnout and certainly a desire to have a bit of a pressure relief. As a result of the increased calls and the increased volume of offloads, we're also now encountering more code zeros. And this is an issue that we talked to County Council before with respect to the issue of code zeros. And part of the challenge that we have is working with our dispatch. And we're not certainly trying to suggest that dispatch isn't doing a good job. But part of the challenge we've got is dispatch is so busy. And often when we're hitting a code zero, there needs to be communication, not only with the dispatch center, but with the supervisor who's on the road or in the emerge to confirm the code zero has taken place and in fact is occurring. Because often there will be available units in the emerge that have not identified or that dispatch because they're busy. So that's obviously some of the challenges we've had in the past. But of note, since June of this year, we've been able to document at least 57 different instances of code zero that have occurred within our community. And some of them are short periods of time, some of them are longer periods of time. And often we work with London Health Sciences and our paramedics and paramedic supervisors to get those vehicles clear, whether it be two in the afternoon or two in the morning. Those are some of the areas that certainly have challenged us. And as I said earlier, we recognize that our staff are tired and they're strained. And certainly, this is something that we have seen and continue to see as a challenge for our system. Also of note as well, for the last 12 to 18 months, Middlesex London Paramedic Service has hired in excess of 102 staff. And the more we hire as well at times, we just don't have enough. And this again is just not related to Middlesex London. It is something I'm hearing my colleagues around the province. And you're hearing about nurses, you're hearing about physicians. And again, this is part of the health and human resource challenges. And even as of today, we're still putting out more requests for more staff. But we're in a competitive market and there is very limited. And certainly, one of the areas that I know the warden talked with Minister Jones about, and that is increasing the paramedic graduates to get them out quicker and faster. And I know past Warden Burkhardt-Jessen was there as well. I wanted to provide a quick update as well to talk about what we're also doing to try and address some of these system strains and pressures. So as the warden mentioned, we went to EMO and some of the areas that the warden presented with the joint delegation was talking about, a proposed pilot for land ambulance dispatch, as well as the issue of ambulance offload delays. And some of the areas that we asked Minister Jones, and again, the warden talked about it, was a pilot where we would put and deploy a single paramedic into a Tahoe or a Ford Escape or Explorer to respond to what we call queued calls. So these are code three calls, and I think council is aware of code three, so they're not lights or sirens. But these are calls that are waiting in the queue that we have nobody to send because we're sending our transporting vehicles to code fours or lights and sirens calls. But often at times, we've seen upwards of 10 calls held in the queue, upwards of an hour, two hours, or three hours. And we've asked the ministry since, I'll say, last December to try and look at ways that we could better utilize our community paramedics to better address these calls that are being held. And so this pilot is to try and address these calls, to take them out of the queue, have a paramedic respond, treat the patient on scene, and release the patient and refer them immediately to a community paramedic. We have them in the area, we're avoiding a transport ambulance, we're avoiding going to emerge that's already backed up where we've got 20 vehicles waiting in offload. So we've asked the ministry to consider an expedited approval of this. Obviously, we're going to work with the ministry on the quality assurance and the success of this program. But that was one of the areas we highlighted. Obviously, for the province as well, to continue to invest in expanding community paramedicine, as well as looking at the ambulance act. And on the proposed actions, next steps, as the warden said, we have sent, she has sent the two letters to Minister Jones and to the province regarding the EMO delegation. And certainly, the pilot is one of those areas. I've noticed well that we're looking at, County Council is familiar with the CMHA diversion site where we're going to Huron Street. And one of the areas, and that's been a success, and I know Minister Jones is aware of that, she's referenced it. And that's part of the models of care. So Middlesex London and Middlesex County was a leader in that. And we're going to be working with the province and CMHA to expand the eligibility criteria to see if we can increase the amount of patients that we can divert away from the emerge department and to Huron Street as well. I must also inform council that we continue to work in collaboration with LHSC, their CEO, Dr. Jackie Schleifer-Taylor. Again, past Warden Burkhardt-Jessen started that dialogue. And I know the warden has had that discussion. And LHSC has been a good partner, they're under strain, we're under strain, but they continue to work with us in collaboration. And I've noticed well, Friday of this week, we are going to be having a joint meeting, meaning LHSC, Middlesex London Paramedic Service, along with Ontario Health and the Assistant Deputy Ministers specifically to discuss offload delay issues. These are meetings that the Assistant Deputy Minister has and continues to discuss throughout the province. So I wanted County Council to be aware that this is an active dialogue and an active opportunity to seek solutions, short term, medium term and long term on this. But there still is certainly a lot more work to be done. So, Madam Warren, that's a high level on the report itself. There is a recommendation, but I'm happy to take any questions that County Council may have. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would say that on discussions with, for example, Minister Tabula was very appreciative of the time that you had spent with him when he came to London to explain and was very positive about a lot of the programs that we do here. So I think one of our greatest strengths is that we are coming up with solutions all the time and bringing to the province and hopefully those pilot projects will be approved. So any questions, councillor Burkhardt-Jess?
Thank you, and through the warden, thank you very much for that update, Neil. I was actually going to bring up Minister Tabolo's visit because I represented the warden when he was here since she was unable to be there that day. And as, as the warden said, he was very impressed with what we're doing in this region. So I think there should be support, I think, coming from his ministry. I mean, I think you've laid it out quite well. It's just going to be continued discussions, continued advocacy. This, this issue, this problem, I guess, for lack of a better word, can't be solved overnight. But the more information we provide, the more solutions we come up with. I think that, you know, eventually we'll see some give on that. Just two things, I know that the warden's been working with the city and LHSC mentioned this on the 100-day report. And I guess I'm just looking to make sure that that, that that partnership between the three continues. Are you, are you still seeing some traction on the LHSC end? Because quite often, I think, when we get these reports, especially with offload delay, sometimes it seems that there might be some pushback from LHSC. And it could be because, you know, their resources are strained anyways. So I'm just looking to see, making sure that that continues. But also, you know, you mentioned at the beginning of your report that this is not unique to Middlesex London, that this is a provincial issue. So, you know, are you having regular conversations with your colleagues? It's great that we can come up with a solution, that we can say this is what we're doing in our area. But quite frankly, I don't think that, like, it's not going to solve the problem for the province. And I think collectively, as a group, that's what's going to, what's going to make change.
Thank you, and through Warden to councillor Burkhardt-Jessen. So a couple of areas on the relationship with London Health Sciences. It has been extremely positive under the leadership of their CEO and president, Dr. Schleifer-Taylor. So that I can assure you of. And certainly, even as of this morning, myself and Deputy Chief Bennett had a meeting with their new, I'm going to probably not have the title, their executive sort of vice president that's overseeing the Victoria campus and the university campus, who reports directly to Dr. Schleifer-Taylor about opportunities. And certainly, in our discussions with LHSC, their problem solving in real time with regards to their ED pressures and our pressures because it's all related. And you're right, it's not just a Middlesex London issue, it is a provincial issue. And you're right, it's not just a Middlesex London issue, it is a provincial issue and it's. National and as I said earlier, it's a worldwide issue. It is a phenomenon that we're all dealing with. Having said that as well, I was on a call this morning with the Ontario Association of Paramedic Chiefs or Executive Committee. And one of the areas we talked about, our Minister Jones is models of care. And that are opportunities for early wins. And some of those models of care are going to be short term as the pilot we talked about. Some of them are going to be longer term and, but at the end of the day, it's about relieving some pressures in the short term. And then working in the longer term. And obviously. One of the areas, and again, county council is very familiar is. Alternative level of care, which is a big issue. This has been twenty years. I've been in the system for forty years, but alternative level care issues and challenges within the hospitals. Has been out there for twenty years. Offloads started coming out of SARS one. That's where offloads were created. And we're coming out of SARS two, which is COVID, and we're seeing an exacerbation of this. So. These are longer term issues that are going to require more thoughtful systemic changes. We're not going to do it alone. And obviously, the support that county council has and continues to bring is going to be instrumental in the days and weeks and months ahead.
Council Vanderheden.
Yes, thank you through your Madam Warren to Neil Chief, Chief Roberts. You know. It was two thousand fourteen was the last time I went to the ministry to ask for dispatch. So this is a very long, long process. And every time we go, we feel like we're making headway. I just want to say thank you for, for all the partnerships that you're making with the ministry, with, with L H S C. With all the different organizations around because we have to make sure we do this together. It's not just one organization that can, can tackle this and. And I guess I, I was very disappointed after A M O. I know during A M O, even every question to the ministry panel. There was so many questions on healthcare and yet, you know, we had four hundred and forty-four municipalities represented at A M O. And the day after we all went home was when the province had their update on health. I thought that was seriously. A slap in the face to politicians across this country. When we were all sitting in that room. We could have had all kinds of updates that mentioned the things that they were doing, one of which was. Putting people that are in hospitals that are seniors that need to go to another facility into another facility, which on the, on the, on the. First blush, I think is a great idea because if they, they don't need to be using a hospital bed, somebody else that needs a hospital bed, maybe that will take some of the load off the offload. That just makes sense to me. However, our nursing homes have waiting lists that are like a hundred and fifty-seven people long. So how is this going to all work? So I guess what I'm saying in all of that is the partnerships have to happen. We have to continue with the pressure and I'm really grateful that when we go and speak to the people that, that can make these decisions on our behalf. With our help by giving solutions. And the warden spoke about that. And I think we have to start having those conversations where we absolutely give those solutions because you're working on the front lines. And, and that, that's where a lot of this can happen. So I guess it wasn't really a question, just comments in some frustration. And some hope that, that we are going to move ahead because we have to. It's in the wellbeing of our citizens.
Thank you. Any other comments? I think we do have a motion that the, the operations update may receive for information. Council Mayhew seconded by Council Elliot, all in favor. Great. Thank you, Chief. Now moving on to eight D, which is a truck purchase, three quarter ton crew cab pickup. And that report would be from our. G M Infrastructure Deputy C E O County Engineer, Chris Trainee.
Thanks, Warden. Yeah, yeah, it needed like a legal size business card. I, I won't reiterate what the chief said earlier about the worldwide pressures and the change that we're seeing for the acquisition of resources. Just during COVID and this, this worldwide shortage on everything and we're feeling it in the roads department. This is a truck that we've been looking for since the fall of two thousand twenty-one. We have a challenge with this vehicle. Basically, it's a vehicle that we use to move our crews around from site to site. And not only does it have to transport people, but has to transport equipment. So we are. Always looking for a truck that can carry four staff and a full sized box. We can carry tools safely. We can carry materials safely. There's enough volume there that we can have an efficient. Fleet. So we've continued to look for these trucks over the last couple of years and we've finally found one in the local marketplace. Oxford Dodge Chrysler has a twenty twenty-two Ram, three quarter ton diesel, four by four pickup truck. Don't normally spec four by four in these vehicles, but it is an added value for us. Used on a construction site does provide additional traction and safety for the vehicle. Of note, it's fifteen thousand more than what we budgeted two years ago. It's not unreasonable to see if you compare to this year's guide, there are none of these vehicles in this year's guide that we just approved recently. But we're certainly seeing a massive increase in the overall price of all of the equipment that's in our five year equipment replacement guide. So we have some money in reserves to make up for these shortfalls. And my recommendation is that we purchase this pickup truck. For seventy-nine thousand eight hundred fifty dollars plus tax. Happy to answer any questions.
Any comments or questions regarding that report? Okay, so we have a recommendation in front of us that the quote submitted by Oxford Dodge Chrysler for the supply of a. Twenty twenty-two Ram, twenty-five hundred, three quarter tradesman diesel, four by four crab. This is as long as your title, Chris, this description of this truck. Be accepted. So we will look for a motion mover. Council Rob seconded by Council Brennan. All in favor? So moved. Hey, now, moving on to council's comments and other business, I, I know that Council Burkhardt Justin would like to say something, but I also just quickly would like to mention. To welcome Sue Clark. She will be coming to county council later on this year. And it's great to have her in the audience and we appreciate you being here. Okay. Council Burkhardt Justin, go ahead.
Great. Thank you, Warden. I'm just on the heels of Neil's report and actually the warden's opening comments. The warden did talk about the successful delegations that we did have at A M O. And I think that. There was a lot of good steps that started. We, we had joint delegations with the city. And there was lots of information shared. I guess now Rob, I, he was at, Rob Flack was at one for sure, whether he was at both, I can't remember. But our, our other M P P, Monty was not. He wasn't able to go to A M O this year. So coming out of A M O, I'm thinking that this conversation still needs to happen, it needs to continue. And I was wondering if we could. Ask for a formal meeting with Rob and Monty at the same time to present what we presented at A M O. Both from the health perspective, but also from the social services perspective. Those are two voices that can advocate for our needs in. Toronto. And I think it would be great to bring them up to speed. And as much as I think that we get a lot out of meeting with them. Maybe more casually, I do think that this should be a formal meeting with. The warden, with the C A O and with the senior staff involved to formally present what we presented at A M O.
I think that sounds like a good idea. I think. Minister McNaughton missed a bit of the information and Minister Flack just joining us would surely be interested in. Any information that's coming his way. So I, I think that sounds like a good idea. Would you? Before I ask, is there any other comments about that? Council Devi.
Sorry about that wrong button. I think that's an excellent idea. The other part of that equation is that they're not constrained to the time that we are allowed at A M O. And I find that they're generous when they actually book something into their calendar. So I think that's definitely worthwhile.
C E O Rayburn.
Yeah. And to the credit of our M P Ps, they've also asked already for some time to talk about, or to just, well, in Minister, in. Mr. Flax, I didn't almost gave him a new title there, but not minister, but Mr. Flax. Case. I know he's anxious to learn more about how our ambulance service works and about the healthcare side. We could try to combine all of that into what Kathy suggested. And because I know that the timetable that he was hoping for was the next couple of weeks. So. You know, I'm thinking now we just combine it and try to do it out at the, we probably wouldn't be able to invite all the council because then it'd be a council meeting and we'd be breaking some rule, but we could. Certainly the warden and Neil and Cindy and I could. Be there and walk them through both subjects. So we'll, we'll get that set up. We probably just can take that as direction. We're, we're planning on doing. Fifty percent of that already. We'll just expand it a bit.
So Council Burkhardt Justin, if we leave it as the C E O and the, our clerk to organize, then we'll go ahead with that and. We'll certainly keep council informed of any development through that, that action.
Just say. Go ahead. Did the clerk, did you want a motion on that or? So I will make whatever that motion is to ask for that. Business to move forward. And I'm sure that our clerk will word it appropriately.
Yes, I've got wording.
I didn't get that far in, you know, my comments.
So that a meeting request be sent to M P P Flack and Minister McNaughton to present the materials on land ambulance and childcare presented at A M O.
So Burkhardt Justin, moving, Council Elliot seconding, all in favor. Good. Moving on to bylaws. Oh, sorry, sorry. Go ahead.
Just sorry, I was just under other comments. I wanted to thank the, everyone that came to the past Warden's. Event the other day. We haven't had one of those in about three years as well. And I think it's really important that we recognize the leadership of days gone by and, and the work that they did to strengthen our communities and our county. In, in their time. And we had a nice event in Dorchester at the home of past Warden Maudsley and his wife. They graciously, graciously hosted us. And I just wanted to say thank you. And I think it's still really important that we have those conversations. Because we can't forget our past, even though we move into our future. So. Just wanted to say thank you to everyone. And I know Marcy and Steve did a lot of work to help set it up. So thank you for that as well. And it was a. Lovely afternoon to get together and just have conversation.
It was a good afternoon. Council Devi.
Thank you, Warden. I think everyone knows that I was elected to the County Caucus at A M O again. But subsequent to the election, we did have a final board meeting and I was selected to be the Chair of the County Caucus. That means. Yeah. So that means a few extra meetings a year because part of my duty there will be to attend not only the executive meetings, but also to be part of the memorandum of understanding meetings with the provincial. elected representatives in Queen's Park. So if there's anything that we want to beat the drum on or, yeah. Yeah, well, we're, we'll work on things. So thank you for your support in nominating me back. Before, I guess it was in July or June when we had to get the paperwork in. Appreciate the opportunity and look forward to serving the county. Thank you.
Well, I'm sure you'll do a great job and it will be exciting to see A M O in London next year. So you'll be. On your home turf and presenting as well. So that's great. Good. Any other comments before I move on? Brad, you're okay up there? Bylaws, ten A, seven, one, eight, nine, we've already done this one or do we do that again? We just talked about the bylaw, right? The F U or the few. Okay, okay. All right. Can we do them together? Okay. And then ten B, seven, one, nine, zero, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of county council on August thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. So looking for a first and second reading. Council Elliot seconded by Council Mayhew, all in favor. So moved. And then into the third and final reading mover. Council Coniston seconded by Council Vanderheden, all in favor. So moved. Now we're moving into the committee of the whole at one forty-four P M and looking for a mover to do this. Council Smith seconded by. Council Burkhardt Justin, thank you. And all in favor. So moved. And now we're into our eleven A, which is delegations and reports of county officers. Our first one is eleven A one attainable housing review. And I'm going to look to our Director of Planning to provide an introduction for us.
Thank you through the warden. I'll be very brief. Just as a reminder, this is a project that was supported by the provincial modernization funding. And a few months ago, we went through an R F P process and brought on board Vink Consulting and T W C Consulting. So staff, we met with them a few times now and we're starting to exchange information as they wrap, ramp up the project and. I'm certainly from, I think staff's perspective, we're pretty confident we've got the right consulting team. They understand southwestern Ontario and, and the non-G T A kind of side of housing. So we're excited about that. The purpose of this meeting really is just to introduce, for them to introduce themselves and their background to you, give a bit of an overview of the project. And then seek your input. Just the goal really is to ensure that at the end of the project, the questions and the things that you want answered are addressed. And so of course, any feedback today. And then with your permission, Madam Warren, we'd like to send out an email to county councillors that asks some more specific questions on the housing issues. To sort of give you maybe a week or so to kind of think about it and then put that down in writing and then that would get passed on to the consultant. So that's all I would say as, as an introduction.
Okay. And I believe we have representatives on the screen at the minute or on, on the screen right now. So welcome. And I believe we have. Cassandra and Jody and I'm trying to read the work from there. Sue, it's on one angle, so it's a bit difficult. Anyway, if you would go ahead and introduce yourselves and the floor is yours.
Great. Thank you, Madam Warren. My name's Cassandra of Vink and I'm the lead with the consulting team that's going to be undertaking the attainable housing review. I'm pleased to be with you this afternoon. And as Dirk mentioned, I'm here to provide a bit of an overview of the work that we're undertaking for the attainable housing review. And an opportunity to hear from you about some of the ideas you have, some of the concerns and challenges that you want addressed through the review. Hopefully you have my slides there that they come up to perfect. Great. So the consulting team includes both members of Vink Consulting and T W C Consulting or Tim Welch Consulting. As the project lead, I'm also going to be supporting. Housing policy component of this work and advisory, advising on service delivery improvements. Tim Welch is going to be leading our housing need and demand component. Supporting the best practice review and acting as a housing policy and strategic advisor for the review. I have Jody Ball with me here today as well. She's going to be our lead on the engagement and also acting as a housing policy advisor for. The review. And Sue Richie Raymond is also with me today. She is going to be leading some of the housing service delivery review, best practice review and acting as a advisor on. Related to governance and will also be supporting the housing need and demand component. So if you want to, whoever's, yeah, perfect. And you can even move to the next one. That'd be great. So the attainable housing review is really meant to be an informative tool for the county to assist in considering housing issues. And opportunities. As you move forward. We were given three primary objectives through the R F P, three objectives were identified. The first was to examine the needs. Across the housing continuum, ranging all the way from emergency shelter and short term supportive housing to long term supportive housing. Subsidized rental housing and then market rental and homeownership. Part of the objectives of our work is also to understand and identify what the gaps are in the provision of various components of housing. And then the other key piece is preparing a municipal strategy to meet current and future housing needs in the county. If you can move to the next slide. The scope of our review includes eight key components. The first is to review current local strategies. So strategies that exist at the county level. The local municipal level as well as City of London as the service manager. Will also be undertaking an analysis of housing data. We'll also be looking to review roles and responsibilities related to housing. And who plays what role. We'll be doing a best practice review and a comparison to other municipalities that are similar in size and geography. A key component of our work will be community engagement. We'll talk a little bit further on in a minute. We'll be preparing a plain language public report. On the housing issues, options. And provide information to the community on how to access information related to housing. We'll also be preparing a developer information guide. And the final component of our work is to develop land use planning. And the final component of our work is to develop land use planning and other recommendations for the county. Our community engagement component will be undertaken in two rounds. In this first phase, we're going to have five virtual focus groups with key stakeholder groups. So those groups include your community agencies, local indigenous organizations, youth organizations, seniors groups, representatives from at-risk groups, as well as your affordable and nonprofit housing providers, as well as private landlords, real estate professionals and developers. We are also launching a community survey that is going to be posted on the city's website to gather feedback from residents about current and future housing needs. And we're holding two community roundtables in this phase. One will be virtual, one will be in person in Strathroy to provide residents with an opportunity to provide their input into key issues and opportunities facing the county. We're also planning two or three specific in-person engagement sessions that will be held with women and with marginalized populations in the community. Then in our second round of engagement, once we have some preliminary ideas on directions for the strategy, we'll be having a workshop with the new county council to obtain their feedback on the preliminary vision, principles, goals, strategies and preliminary targets. We're also planning in-person and virtual open houses that will be designed and facilitated to share the vision and the preliminary recommendations to get feedback on those components from the public. We'll also be following up with key stakeholders and posting those draft directions and recommendations online on the county's website to ensure as many residents as possible have an opportunity to provide feedback. So in terms of timelines, we began the project in July and worked on developing a research and engagement plan and began the document and data collection process. From now and, and throughout September, we're working on that background data collection and analysis component. So besides the, the presentation today, we're looking at existing housing policy and strategies. We're working on that data and analysis. We're really launching into that community engagement component, which will be fairly intense in, in September and doing a best practices and comparative analysis. Then in October and November, we'll be developing the direction and recommendations. So the vision, principles, goals, providing some recommendations around land use policy and other, other directions. Then in December, with that new council, we'll be coming back for the, the county council workshop. We'll be doing that second phase of community engagement and then taking that information and developing a final report, which will later follow with a, a presentation to council on those final findings. So today, one of the things that we're hoping to hear from you on is what questions and concerns you would like to see addressed through this project? So we have a few moments now to, to hear any of your initial feedback. And then as Dirk mentioned, we're hoping to send out an email to counselors to get any additional, with a few more detailed questions, to get any additional thoughts you have on challenges, opportunities, your ideas on things that we should be thinking about within a municipal housing strategy moving forward.
Okay, thank you, Cassandra. And I'm sure that everyone's looking forward to working with you on getting this information out because it's a very topical at the moment and, and a problem that we see all over. Do you may have any comments or questions? Counselor Burkhardt, Justin?
Thank you, and thank you through the warden. This certainly is a very timely review. I think anybody going back and looking at our council meetings, the amount of times housing has been brought up. And I suspect in the next term of council, it will be brought up even more so. So definitely looking forward to going through this process and, and, you know, already anxious to see what the final report will look like. For me, I, I really want to make sure that the scope and that the definitions are very, very clear. Because we throw around affordable and attainable housing and they're very different things. And yet they get mixed up. And you know, when we think about affordable housing, and, and I mean this with all due respect, because I know it's not a term that is accepted today, but affordable housing is more of the social housing, right? It, it is more of housing that we see as somehow subsidized, but it can be, it can be co-op housing. It can be government-run, it can be run by nonprofits. We know that it can be a whole gamut of things, but it tends to fall more into that social housing bucket, whereas attainable housing, I mean, it's got to be accessible, it's got to be available. It does also fall into that thirty percent income. But when we look at attainable housing for a region, it's thirty percent of that, of that region's median income. So if you were to take Lucan, for example, that income might be ninety thousand. If you went to Elderton, it might be a hundred and twenty thousand. If you went to Thorndale, it might be sixty thousand. So it's very different in each, in each re, in area. And attainable, I mean, it, it also has, it's very much product and market-driven housing. So we, I really want to make sure that, that whatever is presented is very clear for the end user to know what type of housing it is that we are talking about. And then from that, those definitions, of course begs the question, what is our role in it? Because do we have a role, and this will all come out of it, to either incentivize or to attract or to actually be, you know, have our, our, our skin in the game sort of thing. And the other part that I, I don't want lost is the engagement with our partner municipalities and our lower-tier municipalities. This is, this is an issue that faces all of us across Middlesex. And I hope that you will engage with those partner municipalities to hear what they're hearing in our community. Because as I say, it's, it, it is an issue in every community. But where it sits on the priority list could be very different. And when we look at Middlesex, I think we have to keep that in mind, very much so. And then I guess the follow-up would be at the end to make sure that, that our, our municipalities get this information. And whether or not throughout the process and the next few months, whether that's a visit from the consultants or even from our senior staff with our local municipalities, because I think it's key to hear from all of us.
And if you can answer that, that's pretty well the whole report, all done. Anyway, I see Counselor Elliott and then Counselor Vanderheiden, Counselor DeVee, and then Counselor Mayhew. Go ahead.
Yes, through your worship, one of the considerations I'd really like to see put into place from this is how we implement it into policy. It's great to have this information in front of us. But if we don't have the tools in order to implement it, that's the biggest thing. And I think the biggest, the biggest issue we face in, in terms of housing is NIMBYism, especially when it comes to the density, when we look at, you know, Counselor Burkhardt, Justin just talked about attainable housing and affordable housing and how that all fits into our neighborhoods. You know, the, the moment you try and put a range of housing options, whether it's apartments or condos or stacked townhouses or all of this. You know, we get a lot of pushback from the political front not to implement that because they want it to, because residents want it to look like the way it looks. So you know, they want the big houses on big lots that more and more people are not being able to afford to purchase. And so when we have a poll, when we have this information in a policy that we can say, we need to implement this, we have to implement this, and here's the policy behind implementing it. That's a lot more powerful than just saying, well, I have this little handout that says we should be doing this. And so at the end of the day, I would like a way for us to be able to implement this and enforce it in our neighborhoods in order to make our neighborhoods where everybody can live.
So you're looking for actual tools in the toolbox. Yep, okay. All right, Counselor Vanderheiden.
Thank you. And I apologize if I say something that's already been said because I have these things kind of written down. I recall when I first got on council, housing was done through market rates and market values and what developers wanted to put in and what developers could put in and how, how your community was laid out. I remember in the north end of Strathroy, it took like probably, they wanted to do something in about three phases. It probably took about twelve phases because the market wasn't really hot and the developer just took the time because that's how it worked. We now understand that there's such a huge need for various reasons that I don't need to get into today. But that now we are finding that our residents are having these issues of finding places to live, never mind affordable or attainable or anything. We're, we're finding there's just not enough variety of homes out there for people and everyone deserves a place to be. So that's a bit of the history where I come from. And it's not just the need, we need to find out what the solutions are for Middlesex County. Not, we, we, we're going to find out the need. I mean, you've laid that plan out really well on how you're going to do that. And I really appreciate that you're going to talk to all the key stakeholders, whether it's municipalities, whether it's the co-ops, whether it's any, any of the players that are in the field. Because I know we just had an anniversary for one of our co-ops, Gilsian Creek and Strathroy Care Dock. They've been there for about thirty-five years. They've done an amazing job and they're still moving forward, doing an amazing job. So we, we need to talk to all of these people that have had success as well. I agree one hundred percent with Counselor Elliott. Community engagement is incredibly important. But what you hear from people at the start is different from what you hear from people when you put a shovel in the ground and the property next door. Absolutely different. And, and we've all heard it, we've all, we could all write a book on it. And that's why it's so important to have these plans in place. And in Strathroy Care Dock, we did our first ever secondary plan on property that's not developed yet. So we can now go to the plan and we can say, okay, this is where the school is going to go. This is where the apartment building is going to go. This is where the row houses are going to go. This is where the streets are going to go. This is where the park's going to go. So now whoever moves there, they can see what's happening. Where that's a difference from what I explained in the very beginning. Now it's very expensive to do secondary plans, so I'm hoping that this plan will kind of take care of some of those issues. And I also want to agree with Counselor Burkhardt, Justin and Counselor Elliott on the geographic piece. People don't look necessarily at the line on the map that we have. When, when Lucan Bedolph puts an apartment building in, that doesn't mean only people from Lucan Bedolph are going to live there. They're going to come from all over the place. So we even have to make sure that as a county, we recognize it's not just one community or another that has a need and has to have things move forward. It's all of us and that we can't just get stuck on these geographic borders. I think those are some of the points that I wanted to bring forward and I just did. So yes.
Thank you. Counselor DeVee. Thank you, Warden. Through you to our consultants. Thank you for your presentation. You've answered a lot of my questions already. The definitions, I think, I'm going to just really touch on a couple of things because a lot of what I wanted to say has been said already. So I think the definitions, what is attainable, what is affordable, what is the inventory of options that we have? I'm thinking in terms of complete communities. I think that's the word I used to describe how I want the world to look when we're done. And that means something for everyone. I, I think below one oh nine probably doesn't reference all the pieces equally. It talks about the fact that we don't have enough for anyone, but that is a part of the problem. And we need to make sure we address thing, I think, things in an integrative, thoughtful way. Again, I want to, again, I want to again reinforce that. The county OP and our individual OPs and our geographies, all of those, we're different, even though we're part of a whole. And we're at different points in different municipalities. So I think why there's an integrated look happening here, there are also differences that need to be recognized. And to that extent, I think the suggestion whoever made it first was that staff also be included in this probably is a really good idea. As I think you're already focusing on integrative thinking and all the audiences that we need to include, but I'm just going to reinforce that. And, oh, so comparators too. I think when we're looking at opportunities, places that have already done things across the province. So don't compare us necessarily to London, I guess is what I'm saying. Is let's make sure we're taking a look at what's happening in places like where we are and what are innovative solutions and that kind of thing. So. I'm going to stop there. I think we've, we've said, I've said just the same thing everyone else has, maybe in a few different words, but thank you again.
I've got Counselor Mayhew and then I'll call Counselor Coniston.
Thank you very much, Cassandra, for that presentation. I'd like to focus on an opportunity that I think is undervalued. It's many, there's many business districts within Middlesex County in our Hamilton villages, where you have that C one zoning, you have services and retail businesses and shops who have second and third story floors above those premises that have been abandoned for years. And when you look at the large urban areas that have had a very devalued downtown, they have opened that up for housing for young people. And not only has it provided a place for people to live comfortably and safely, it has enhanced the business community. In Middlesex County, we have an abundance of these. And I speak for my own municipality of southwest Middlesex, that we have seen photographs of history where these premises had balconies that overlooked the business district and there was character on the streetscape. Not only will it provide accommodation, it will enhance the business district. It will create a, a marketing opportunity for individuals. And there has to be something that propels that vision. And it would enhance it through some type of structure where there would be incentives for these apartments to be utilized. And they are just completely empty spaces at present and they have been for decades. Thank you very much again.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Coniston.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Thank you for your report. I read it with a great deal of interest and I certainly appreciated your presentation. But I want to address an issue that I believe my, my fellow members of council have, have not addressed yet, although they addressed many of my issues entirely. And that is in attainable housing review, and we defined attainable, we have been affordable. I believe you touched on the beginning of your presentation as geared to income housing, which is a growing need in, in our county throughout. However, it's very limited and we're restricted because of the sole shareholder being the city of London, which, which controls the development of housing and their investments are primarily in the city. The county does contribute substantially to the budget for that service. However, the investments in our, in the county are very limited at best. So my question for you is how, how will you liaise with the city to promote geared income housing? Housing Development Corporation, where certainly are ample opportunities throughout all the communities in a county for development of this type of housing, which is needed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Certainly that gives you a lot to start with, I think. And I, is there any other comments or questions? Counselor Burkhardt, Justin?
Just thanks, Warden. Cassandra, I'm sure you just misspoke, but you said that the survey was going to be posted on the city's website. I'm assuming it's the county's website. Just wanted to make sure that, that it was going to be on the county's website and not just the city of London's website.
Yes, it'll be on the county's website. Yeah, Rayburn?
Just the other, only other thing I want to add to the thinking is that, you know, going to Adrian's question about how are we going to do things within the current structure, one of the things we're trying to accomplish this report is to not think about current structures. They exist, obviously, but we want to float above those. Maybe it's time whenever we're, where we do our own thing with our own dollars, a hundred percent funded by Middlesex. If we think this is really important, maybe we put our own tax dollars into it beyond what we subsidize. So I, I guess just off of Adrian's question, I'm encouraging everyone to not think about the restraints of the current system. We'll work backwards once we figure out what the solutions are into those systems and see what's available. But let's, let's float above that, I think, in this report. That would be my ideal goal.
Yep, one of our recommendations in our. Yep, one of our recommendations in our strategic report is to be innovative, and that's the thinking cap you should have on, I guess. So I again, um, thank you again, ladies. We look forward to uh meeting you in person at some point. And I do have a motion that the attainable housing review presentation be received for information. Mover, Council Davit, second by Council Elliot, all in favor? So move, thank you. And now our next uh present, our delegation is eleven A two London and Middlesex Local Immigration Partnership Presentation. And I'm looking for Joe Windsor to be able to introduce our people.
Hello, thank you, Warden, through you to council. And I'll start my video. I'm so sorry about that. Thank you so much for
Just one second. We'll just wait. I think Joe was in mid-sentence, so just hold on for one second, and then we're ready to start with you. Go ahead, Joe.
Hi Jill, sorry about that. So, uh, thank you and through the warden. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for your time today. Uh, through my work in social services in the community, we have seen an increase of newcomers into Middlesex County. In July, a small group including Nadine from Early On, Bill and Julie from Community Employment Choices, Faraz, our settlement service worker, and myself offered a drop-in information session for Ukrainian families in the Middle, in Middlesex County. We had forty-eight individuals and fifteen children who attended to learn about services and supports available in throughout the county. Thank you to Warden Warwick and Council Van, Vanderheiden for attending. And thank you to the residents of Middlesex County for opening their hearts and homes to these individuals and families in need. With the increase of newcomers and immigrants in the, in our community, Cindy and I thought it was a good time to bring one of our community partners, the London Middlesex Local Immigration Partnership to council, to share information and services that are offered and provided by the organization. Today, we have Huda Hussein and Jill Tansley to provide a presentation and answer any questions council may have. Thank you, and over to you, Huda and Jill.
Thank you.
Ready, ladies?
Thank you, Joe. Uh, thank you so much for the invitation to present to Middlesex County Council today about the London and Middlesex Local Immigration Partnership. My name is Jill Tansley. Uh, I'm the manager of strategic programs and partnerships with the Anti-Racism and Anti-Oppression Division of the City of London. And I'm also the city co-chair of the London and Middlesex Local Immigration Partnership. And I'm here with my colleague, Huda Hussein, who will present herself.
Thank you very much for having us today. My name is Huda Hussein, and I'm the uh project coordinator for the London Middlesex Local Immigration Partnership since its inception in two thousand nine.
So thank you. Uh, we will take about ten minutes of your time and hope to have a, a few minutes for questions or discussion following the presentation. If we could have the next slide, please.
I was muted. I'm sorry about that. Here is what Jill and I are hoping to uh share with you today. We'll talk about the composition of the London and Middlesex Local Immigration Partnership, three core in short, LMLP. What we do, or the activities of the LMLP, the Middlesex County's place in the partnership, and looking ahead to the next three years, since our, our strategic plan will end in twenty twenty-five. Next slide, please. Before starting, talk about the LMLP. Let's talk a little bit about the establishment of the London Middlesex Local Immigration Partnership and some history about the local immigration partnerships, which are called LIPS in general. As we know, immigration is key to the prosperity of our country. And immigrants settle in communities. So the three levels of governments recognize that immigration is a pathway to prosperity. Therefore, for attraction, retention, and integration to happen, a number of LIPS were established. And with this idea that to strengthen the services, the settlement services, both the direct and indirect services. Initially, fifteen years ago, close to thirty-five LIPS were established in Ontario with financial supports from the federal and the provincial government. Today, more than eighty LIPS Local Immigration Partnerships are functioning across the country and solely funded by immigration, refugees, and Citizenship Canada. So our LIP, our LMLP was established in two thousand nine in consultation with Middlesex County. A number of LIPS, if you look around, a number of LIPS have both the rural and urban settings, just like Waterloo, for example, Waterloo region, and here at the London and Middlesex. What is the role of the local immigration partnerships in general? LIPS are the coordinating bodies and planning bodies at the community level. They align settlement and mainstream services and programs to better serve and address newcomer needs. They build on existing initiatives by establishing linkages between sectors. They also create, they also create plans that address the community's needs based on existing strength. So for example, our LIP has a different strategy than the Waterloo LIP or the Centcom LIP because it all depends on the needs of that identified jurisdiction. Next slide, please. In this slide and the next slide, I will give you a brief description of how the LMLP operates and how it is supported. It's very important for the LIP to involve all sectors and individuals to create a more welcoming region and support the successful integration of immigrants. As you see from this background, support is from the service providers, researchers, networks, community at large, plus the three levels of government. And the next slide, next slide, please. We see that our LIP or LMLP is guided by Central Council and five issue-specific sub councils, namely the education, the employment, the health and well-being, inclusion and city engagement, and settlements of councils. It is very important that the LIP involve, as we said, the sectors and every, sorry about that, every uh sub-council focus on the issue that impedes integration and works for the community to find local solutions. For example, the education sub-council many years ago found a problem with uh teachers who are not being well equipped handling the classroom, which has changed. The classroom is not one ethnicity, but there are a multiple ethnicities in the classroom. And the education sub-council presented the present acquisition paper to the Ministry of Education to change that and include some kind of training for the teachers who will be teachers in the future. So it's possible to look at this issue and find some solutions. And LIP actually creates opportunities for collaborations and partnerships. We work with all sectors and service providers, including pillar network, Western University Settlement Sector, faith institutions such as the Canadian Catholic Orthodox Church to educate, with the purpose to educate and to inform. It's worth noting here that in the past, we've had a couple of projects with the county. Some of you may remember, We Are Middlesex a few years ago, and we also had We Are London in London. And very recently, we have had, we have been working on a recent discrimination surveys that looked at the discrimination that's happening to three groups of communities, both in London and Middlesex. As an indirect se- settlement service, the LMLP strives to involve the community as a whole and foster positive relationships among all residents, again with the purpose to create a more welcoming community for all. I'll stop here and then, then we'll now talk about the place of the county in the partnership and explore some opportunities for us to build. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Huda. So as, as Joe Windsor mentioned in his introduction, Middlesex County, just like London, depends on immigration for its, its growth and its economy. London and Middlesex are part of the same economic region in an urban-rural mix. And there's a lot of mobility back and forth. So uh newcomers, for example, might live in London and work in Middlesex, or they could live in Middlesex and work in London, vice versa. We also know that the services provided to immigrants are interconnected. And another issue is that there are key labor shortages in, in um important economic sectors. And this is true for the entire region. Employers are desperate for uh, for employees in a number of areas such as manufacturing, agri-food, construction, and the service industry. So all of this explains why Middlesex County is an integral uh member and partner of the London, uh London and Middlesex Local Immigration Partnership. The county has a seat at the Central Council, which, as Huda explained, is the main decision-making body. It participates on a number of different committees, including the Employment Subcouncil, which in fact is, is chaired by Joe Windsor of Middlesex County, and I believe also includes another representative of Middlesex County. The county has been integral in shaping the London and Middlesex Immigration Portal. If you haven't seen this, it's, this is a website used to attract newcomers to the region and to provide them with information on services. And a number of counselors and past wardens have participated in LMLP events. Could I have the next slide, please? Uh, the county has also participated in preparing and writing fact sheets on employment. And this is um from the point of view of employers, from the community, and also immigrants seeking job opportunities in London and Middlesex. And most recently, the LMLP has been undertaking a special project which the county is involved in on the advisory panel. And that's um looking at the creation of a community-based model for the funding of uh, for settlement services and funding. And we're doing this on behalf of the Department of Immigration, Refugees, and Citizenship Canada. If I could have the next slide, please. So looking ahead, um, uh, the LMLP has a strategic plan of three years. It just began, so this current one runs from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-five. And there are five key priorities which are mentioned under, on the screen. Welcoming community, communication, access to supports and services for immigrants, coordination and collaboration, and reduction of systemic barriers. And if you're interested in seeing the full strategic plan, it is available on the LMLP website, which you can see on the immigration portal. But I'll just touch on a couple of the themes that I think may be of interest to you. And pardon me while, while I read the details. So welcoming community, encouraging the London and Middlesex community to appreciate diversity and actively work to attract, support, and retain immigrants. All residents welcome the full participation of immigrants in Canadian society and work together to eliminate racism and discrimination in all its forms. And the other priority that I'll mention is coordination and collaboration. Uh, it's optimizing outcomes for immigrants through improved coordination and collaboration among service providers. If I could have the next slide, please. So uh, just, I'd like to give a little bit of a summary of how the LMLP staff, and there are three of them led by Huda Hussein, how they have been engaging and supporting the county uh in the LMLP since two thousand nine. So the staff have promoted services offered in the county. In part, that's through the website, but other means as well. They've invited representatives from the county to participate in discussions pertaining to immigrants and immigration. They've shared job opportunities at the county, and that's through a newsletter, bi-weekly newsletter. They've engaged the county in drafting all of the strategic plans since two thousand and thirteen. And as I mentioned, the county is now actively involved in developing us, a new settlement model for consideration by the Department of Immigration, Refugees, and Citizenship Canada. May I have the next slide, please? Uh, I think we may have skipped, did we skip one? If you could just go back, that's, no? Okay, you're correct. I'm so sorry. So I'd like to talk briefly about um the All Are Welcome Here campaign. And I think this is something that Middlesex County might find valuable to become more involved in. We've talked about creating a welcoming community, one where newcomers feel a sense of belonging. There is no distinction between us and them. There is one community where racism and discrimination are recognized and eliminated. So there were several activities led by a welcoming communities work group, which plans all the events. And this is something that Middlesex County might consider becoming involved with. So there's the All Are Welcome Here annual event, which takes place in March. And this is open to the, to the broader community. There is the One Thousand Acts of Welcome website. You can see the URL here, one thousand acts of welcome dot C A. So this is an opportunity uh to share stories about welcoming newcomers. And newcomers themselves can post stories on how they have been included in Middlesex and London. There are All Are Welcome Here lawn signs and decals, window, window decals, bumper stickers, et cetera. These are being distributed through uh the settlement services in London uh and also through the London Public Library system. And then finally, there are bystander tips, and these are available for individuals who see an act of racism and would like to safely intervene. If I could have the next slide, please. So this shows the actual visual depiction of, of the lawn signs and, and bumper stickers. I would like to suggest that we look for opportunities for London and Middlesex to grow together to create a more welcoming community. And um before we leave, here are uh some suggestions um that we might, uh, that we might consider, that you might consider. For example, uh, Middlesex County could join the welcoming communities work group to plan uh the annual activities. It could also uh just consider distributing the lawn signs. You'll see they're in English and French back to back. And you could engage um the Middlesex County libraries in the distribution of those signs or, or your, your settlement services. We could also explore opportunities for working on joint projects that support integration and inform future residents in the county. And Joe Windsor mentioned uh the session on you, uh, Ukraine, Ukrainians that was held recently at the county. I've just learned of an opportunity um in the last day or so um to have um to have a forum on Ukrainians. And I would like to engage the county in that activity, which will take place in about, uh, in about a month's time. If I could have the next slide, please. So um So the LM Lip has a number of social media platforms, including Facebook and Twitter. And this is an opportunity, if Middlesex County has messages on immigration that they would like, you would like to convey, please send them to us, send them to Huda, so that we can get those onto the social media sites. There is also a bi-weekly newsletter, which goes out to over 300 people and organizations. And again, that's another opportunity. If Middlesex County has any material they would like to include, please feel free to send it our way. So thank you very much for this opportunity to present, and Huda and I are here and at your disposal if you have any comments or questions.
Okay, thank you, Jill, and thank you, Huda. That was an excellent presentation, very interesting. And we know that one of the key pieces for workforce development is to make newcomers feel included and comfortable in their new community. So it's a win-win for everyone when we take these steps. Counsel, is there any comments or questions you would like to add? I just want to say the Ukrainian event at the library was very well attended, and I appreciate the the efforts of Joe and Lindsay to make sure that everybody felt included, and it was a really great event, and I was honored to be able to attend along as Mayor Vanderheiden of Strathroy in her role there, too. So I think that those kind of events are going a long way to making people feel that they've made the right choice and that they that they're feeling welcome. So I think we're on a good start. Counselor Elliott?
Yes, through your worship. I, just a question to Jill. I know you had talked about the lawn signs being available through the London Public Library. Would it be a consideration to partner with the Middlesex County libraries as well to offer this? To offer these line signs and the bumper stickers and whatever, and so just to make it more accessible in throughout the county?
Absolutely. We would love that. I think I mentioned that possibility. Actually, we would love that if Middlesex County libraries would would like to distribute those lawn signs and the bumper stickers, please.
Well, we've got all the players in the room, and I think that probably that will be something that we'll be looking forward to in the future, talking to our library services about. Great. Any other comments? No, if not, then thank you very much, ladies, for taking the time today and explaining to us the different work that you're doing, and we look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
11, oh, sorry. I have a motion that the London and Middlesex Local Immigration Partnership presentation be received for information. So looking for mover, Counselor Mayhew, seconded by Counselor Elliott, all in favor? So moved. 11 A3, Ontario Connects Accelerated High-Speed Internet Program. And this is a report from our Director of Information and Technology Services, Chris Bailey. Whenever you're ready, Chris.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Through you to counsel, some really exciting news out of the province recently about this program. The Ontario government has committed nearly $4 billion to connect every region on in Ontario with reliable high-speed internet by the end of 2025. This investment will help ensure that every household and business in every community has access to the digital world. To connect the remaining communities across the province, Infrastructure Ontario led a new and innovative procurement process that started in the summer of 2021. The transparent and competitive process enabled internet service providers to bid for provincial subsidies through a series of reverse auction events for defined geographic areas based upon requirements for high-speed internet infrastructure deployment. On August 4th, the province announced it had signed agreements with eight ISPs to bring high-speed internet access to municipalities across Ontario. As part of the OSIP program, the Middlesex County was broken up into three geographic areas defined as lots as part of the program. These lots were determined by the province and were included in the competitive bidding process. The following is a list and our breakdown of the ISPs that were assigned and successful in bidding for each lot and area. Southwest Middlesex was ExplorerNet Communications. Adelaide Metcalf was North Frontenac Telephone Company and ExplorerNet Communications. Strathroy Caredoc, North Frontenac and ExplorerNet. North Middlesex, North Frontenac and Rogers Communications. Middlesex Centre, North Frontenac and Rogers Communications. TEM Centre was Rogers Communications, and Luca Midolf was North Frontenac and Rogers Communications. One of the requirements for this project or program is a primary contact for each location. Middlesex ITS will be serving as the primary contact for our six of our local municipalities, as well as Middlesex County as a whole. This contact works closely with each of the locations and the province through the broadband one window to ensure that the appropriate information is provided as timely as requested to keep the project moving forward. A big thank you to our Legal Services Division and Wayne and his team. They're working on drafting blanket municipal access agreements that will help expedite the process by including each location in a single agreement. Middlesex IT is working to gather maps and information from ISPs assigned to each of the Middlesex lots. To date, North Frontenac Telephone Company has provided the attached map that outlines their proposed build-out. Greg, if you could put that up on the screen. This map is subject to change pending final edits and revisions, but as you can see, the coverage is absolutely amazing compared to some of the other projects we've seen within Middlesex County. All of those blue lines on the screen you see there are fiber lines that NFTC is planning to run in the three communities that they were successful in bidding on. So in terms of alignment with strategic focus, connecting through infrastructure, strengthening our economy and promoting service excellence, excellence, I would be happy to answer any questions that anyone has about the program. I'm waiting for a lot more information from some of the other vendors or some of the other ISPs. And I will be bringing a subsequent report back to County Council once I have more information and more maps to show you, but really, really excited for our residents and our businesses, Middlesex County, because of this project.
Each each time we talk about this a little bit more and gets pieces of the puzzle start to fall together, so that's good. Counselor DeVetan and Counselor Vanderheiden?
Thank you, Warden, through you to Chris. Thanks for that report. It's always nice to see a lot of colored lines on the map. I was wondering, given the the color and what what's already in the ground, how close are we to having coverage across the county? Do you have a, like a percentage? Are we like three quarters?
By the end of 2025. Start of August, so North is the first company that reached us after the announcement, and they actually already have levels in the, which is excellent news. The goal is to cover 100% of residents and businesses by the end of 2025.
Counselor Vanderheiden?
Thank you to Chris. Thank you for this report. I I know this was coming, and it's it's exciting when we could actually have it on a map and have it brought forward, because this is this is exactly what our residents have been looking for for a long time. And I know that we've been working at this for a bit, too. Swift did did a piece, and that's why I'm really happy to see that North Frontenac got a lot of the work, because they can connect to exactly what my question was earlier about you're not just going beside another fiber, but adding to that fiber. So I think that's exciting. The one thing I want to caution about, though, the province has not, it's not just fiber that's going in. It will also be towers, et cetera. And the more it, the more towers you put up, that that's not a bad thing. But when you try to add too much to one tower, you don't get the broadband experience that that we're looking for anyway. And I I think we've experienced that across the the region as well, where we're all excited, tower goes up, and you don't get any any more bandwidth or power than than you've got before, which is not, that defeats the purpose of spending money on another tower. So I'll be interested to see the next report, what actually gets put where, because the province is doing it in regions, but there's different things going in every region, which makes sense when you look at the topography and the geological areas we work with. But it's, you know, it's exciting, yet I still have some caution in my mind.
CEO Rayburn? We always like to credit the province when they get something right. And this is certainly one of those things. I mean, when Chris and I looked at this criteria for this program, it was almost exactly what when Morgan was here, we were begging for that first program to look like. It's not a program that only has one solution, has multiple solutions. It is a program that aims for 100% very quickly, and it does work directly with the ISPs, so we don't create another level of bureaucracy to get a solution. So we're really excited about this. I know Chris is is cautiously optimistic. I'm really optimistic that this is a massive leap for broadband. And and reason why that's really important in this county is because there's other counties that still have low-hanging fruit. Like where you can just run fiber down a road and and get to it. But there's plenty of places now that we're left with that that low-hanging fruit just isn't an option to to run fiber to for a variety of reasons. So we're left with the hard to serve. Now, in after this, we're left with the hard to serve. That is great news. That's a great position to be in. And we're really close to your Valhalla Joanne of where we have multiple options as opposed to singular options. So this is, this is a pretty exciting one for us that I think is going to be a game changer when it's fully implemented. I I think we're pretty excited. We were pretty excited around here to see this result.
Okay. Any other comments? We sure are in a different place than we were two years ago. That's for sure. So things are moving in the right direction. I do have a recommendation in front of me, or actually behind this page, that the Accelerated High-Speed Internet Program report be received for information. So can I ask for a mover for that, please? Counselor Rob, seconded by Counselor Richards. Hallie, I remember to turn my head and look at you, seconded by, and now all in favor? So moved. Our next is 11 A4, Decentralization Project, a presentation from Bill Rayburn, CEO.
Thank you, Warden. Brad, can you hear me okay? Yeah, perfect. I I just wanted to go over this. We didn't really have a name for what we've been working on for six to seven years, and the decentralization project was the best it could come up with, but really, this this report captures a whole bunch of micro decisions that have been made around the delivery of services and locations, facilities, and rightsizing and preparing for the future. So I thought it'd be a good opportunity today to just tell you where we are, because we can see the finish line in this project from where we are with only one step left, I think, in this project. I remember my very first council meeting where, oh, we'll move forward a bit there, Greg. I remember my very first council meeting where I was asked what I was going to do to get library staff who were down in room nine and 10 at the time. That was our library head office out closer to the libraries. I was in like my first meeting. And I keep getting asked those questions over and over, I think, in however many years I've been here. And we've had a pretty consistent set of goals, strategy, and actions all through council terms, especially in the last two council terms. I think we focused even more just on rightsizing and and getting our on the same page about what should happen. And when I talk about the project goals, Greg, when I talk about the project goals, we we didn't rehearse this, I guess, but the when we talk about project goals, number one, I think, wasn't reducing costs. Number three on this list was project goals, moving services closer to clients. If you look at any one of the reports that are out there on what bothers our residents, it's it's transit and transportation, and and especially for the vulnerable clientele and for the human services that we deliver, getting to services is is very difficult. And in a pre-COVID, pre-Zoom world, getting those services as close to our clients is is hyper-important, and it's still important, even in the world we live in now. Of course, reducing cost was also a project goal. We wanted, you know, we, as you know, every decision here is a business decision. It's not, it's something that we have to look at and make proper business decisions on. But we also wanted to create operational synergies. We'll get into what that looks like and and try to improve our services through synergies and through using the infrastructure that we do have the most efficiently. So if we move forward, Greg, to talk about strategy, we realized we had a long time to figure this out. It wasn't something we had to do overnight, and we just waited until we had winning conditions, to quote a former Quebec premier. But we wanted to have winning conditions where we could patiently implement this strategy. We also wanted to focus on individualized operational solutions. What does that mean? We didn't want a one-size-fits-all. We didn't just want to stick a big tower in the middle of the county and say every service gets delivered out of here, no matter what type of service it is. You've heard me say several times, we have 36 different service areas, and we took a a look at those service areas and decided what was best for them from an operational perspective and where they should be. We consistently monitored for opportunities. Even today, we're going to talk about some opportunities that exist, but taking advantage of those in our timing was really important. And sometimes timing was just wrong in this plan. In 2008, we thought we had a really great decentralization plan for many of our services, but then the market collapsed around a whole bunch of different things. In 2008, we had to reevaluate. And then create lasting, efficient solutions. So my mindset with all of these decisions is 15 years. That's what I'm looking out towards. And that's difficult, because like even we're going to be talking probably next council about how social services is changing in this county going forward. And but I'm trying to anticipate where our services are going, the levels they're going, and then skate to that direction. So that was our strategy. Speaking speaking next about the individualized decisions, as I mentioned, we took a really good look at each of those operational needs and aligning them with our current available space. I'll show you at the next portion of our meeting just how we did that. That's okay, Greg. You can move forward two slides. We 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 looked at everything, including the current footprint and what space was available, and really did a good job, I think, of rightsizing for for what we're what we need going forward. I, my analysis of what we need to do in each of these micro decisions was based upon service area types. So I broke the services that we delivered down into these four areas: site-specific, facility-independent, synergistic, and location-independent, and categorized all of our services into those types of things. So let's talk about site-specific, Greg. We'll move forward and talk about those. Some of these things are fairly obvious. You can't just put Strathmere Lodge employees somewhere else in the county. They have to be at Strathmere Lodge. Same thing with public works. There's a a place that those folks need to work out of. That's site-specific, and of course, land ambulance is the same way. Putting them in a big monolithic building in the center of the county is not going to work. It's going to cause problems. And it's also, speaking of site-specific, one of the factors when I said save money is just not around facilities. It's also about, and it's not only, it's a double-sided coin. I'm looking at how do we save money for our residents that need to access services? But I have to move my employees around in different parts, too. So if unless they want to hire one very specific employee for each area where we deliver the service across this vast, vast county, then I have to think about how they move through the delivery of that service as well and reduce those costs as well. So all of those things were factored in our decision. Moving on then, Greg, to the facility-independent, these are services that really, it doesn't matter where they're delivered out of. In fact, you know, like HR now is a type of service that is spread out across all the different service areas. Our team has to move around on a daily basis. They could be at Strathmere Lodge one day. They could be at an ambulance service another day. They could be out at Gainesborough another day. They could, it's, they're spread out, and they travel. And same thing with legal and IT. All of those are things that are, don't really have a an area where they have to be. IT is, the only exception for IT would be and HR, but in in I, the only exceptions for this are IT does need a server location, so don't get me wrong there, and they also need a build location where they build computers. But that's a fairly small footprint that is facility-dependent. The rest of it's facility-independent. In HR, you do need a meeting location, but in most of our facilities, we have that. That's secure. You can have meetings. So that's the other group that we looked at was a facility-independent. And then we moved on to synergistic. And, you know, Alison asked me what I meant by this yesterday, and it really is the where we saw opportunities to combine services we deliver with an existing service. to combine services we deliver with an existing service, where both services would benefit. Planning is the ultimate example of that, where you can go into your local municipal office. As you know, that's a micro decision that had major implications that we made, where we now have planning folks in local municipal offices, where you can come right from a building official to have a planning discussion. That's a very good development where there is a synergy for everybody that's involved in that. Library is another example. Having the head office out in a specific location that's closest to our biggest branch, but also putting more of the library, senior leadership in library branches, again, synergistic. Engineering, having the engineering department move out of this basement where they were driving a lot out into the county. Like, think about that, like just the driving out into the county to go and do different engineer works or supervise projects. It's harder to do from here than it is from Gainsborough Garage. But also having that crew closely located with the public works team and having their own space out there is a synergy. Of course, economic development has moved out already as well. They're their most recent move out. They're now out in Camoka at the Wellness Center. And we have some work to do around trafficking folks up there. But there's another synergy where you have people coming for a whole bunch of reasons to that building. And now they know that the economic development folks are there. And it's a really nice, no matter whether they stay there long-term or short-term or medium-term, it's still a great thing to have them out where they're being visible by small business groups and, and, and seeing them there. And then, of course, social services. I talked about getting those folks out into the county in a variety of ways. Some of them are in your local municipal offices. Some of them are in your libraries. But having them close to the people they serve and, and changing a few of our agreements so that we save some money in costs of travel has been a real, a real big thing for the county as well over like the past couple of years. And then finally, we talk about the location-independent. What that means is these folks need a location, but it doesn't have to be this building. It can be a building. And so that would be finance. Of course, we need a place where we have all our records and all that stuff. We, basically, this is all governance and administration that would fall under this category, where you need purpose-built space. And when I say purpose-built space, you might say, well, what do you mean? You just need a room for finance and administration. But so much of that group is record-keeping in the special filing cabinets we were even looking at in this basement. If we had to move the specialized filing cabinets that we have down there, just what that would cost them, it would blow your mind to just think about how much records we have, both electronic, but also in the file format. And that's paper, still, that we have to consider on the finance and administration side. So these, I see these three services as being ripe for a new location. They're really the last frontier we have that's remaining in this building. There's not much left in this building other than that. And we can talk about that in greater detail. We'll keep going, Greg. And then when I, when I think about the opportunities, we hit the absolute peak land value in 2019 for property sales. Like, it's, it's right down to the day almost in terms of peak land values. We, as I mentioned, we thought about this with council land sales, not only this property and the adjacent property, but also Strathmere Lodge in 2008. We got really close, like we got really close to the finish line in 2008, not on this one, but in Strathmere Lodge lands. And then the market collapsed. So we just took our time. We said, okay, let's back up and wait for the market demand to come back. The other opportunities that have made all this successful are really our IT strength for hybrid work. Kathy's talked about this a lot, how March 16th happened in, in 2020. March 16th happened, and it felt like we never missed a beat. And then Kathy was asking me about it at the time. She said, why were we able to do that? Well, one, the, it really didn't happen just on that day. We had already been preparing for a virtual world in many respects for well over a year. But COVID gave us that extra push to really fully implement in areas where there was some reluctance to fully implement. And so that's sometimes an opportunities are just good fortune. And I think COVID and that closing down really helped us think about how we could provide services a different way. And I think that services for municipalities across Middlesex are better as a result of that experience, not just at the county level, but at a lower tier level as well. Another opportunity that we're closely watching, and we can talk about more, is declining corporate lease rates. You know, if we, we use our timing model now is probably going to be the low point. In fact, we may have already started to rise a little bit from the low point in terms of corporate lease rates. But we certainly live in a very low corporate lease rate environment. Capital funding is a, is sort of a inverse opportunity because the cost of capital, not only the cost of capital for construction, but the materials, the timing, getting the people you need for capital construction. This is probably the worst time that we've seen in my history for doing that type of stuff. And then, of course, the last opportunity is there will continue to be more opportunities to have synergies with other, other organizations. I think the last frontier for us there is the City of London. In several areas, there's things we can do with them. But I think we're very closely integrated now with our county municipalities on delivery of services. And I think, Greg, the last slide is really just to highlight, or second last slide is really just to highlight the accomplishments that this council's been able to accomplish. Peak land sales, hybrid work implementation, new capital development. Like, people say, you know, I, I got a question actually from a former warden. And he said, you know, why are you getting rid of all the county facilities? And I said, well, but you're not counting all the new development we did closer to the people we serve. Like, Gainsborough Garage is a, and the work we did there is a major development. The work we're doing with every library in the county over the past decade is a major influx of capital. And when you look at the capital development that we've done, it's not one monolithic structure, but it's a load. Like, we have four ambulance station projects on the go right now. We have, we have a logistics program on the go right now. It's, it's really amazing how much capital we've developed. But it's so quiet because it's not one big structure in the middle of the county that people often overlook it, even people that have fairly significant knowledge of county operations. Because it's happened over time gradually when the opportunity presented itself. And always with operational synergies in mind. Like, I just mentioned our ambulance projects. That's in, that's because we waited for North Middlesex to be ready to do their fire, their fire hall. And, and that's a place where the collective taxpayer is going to massively benefit by us working together. And, and we can go through this list of where that's been the case. I talked about reduction in costs and greater integration of services is, is in every one of our areas. We've had greater integration of services by getting decentralization to happen. I, I felt like when I first came here, there was an us and a them in terms of services. And now it's, it's a partnership in terms of delivery of these services across the county, both upper and lower tier. And, and I think that's exactly where council wanted to be. And it's exactly where I think we are. So then that just leaves one last thing, I think, right, Greg? And that's the final piece. We need to complete this project. We need to find a location for governance and corporate support services. And that's really the, like, if you look at this room and look at this floor, that's what we're talking about. What do we do with that group? So that's your, that's really the footprint size we're mostly talking about. And, and some social services, and then upstairs, of course, the finance. But that's the group that we're looking at. And we're going to talk more about that in greater detail over the coming days.
All right. Thank you. And for those of you that weren't in school the day that synergy was taught, the meaning.
I misuse it. If I did, then I would.
No, you did, actually, it's a very good word for what you're trying to describe. But I, I, you know, just because you can pronounce it doesn't always mean that you understand the root cause of it.
All right.
And, and I'm not speaking of you. I'm speaking of me. The interaction, it, what it means is the interaction or cooperation of two or more organizations that combine bring better effects than separately. And I think that's a really good word to use.
I love it. I should have put that in there.
Just want to make sure that we're all on the same page on that one. It's not energy. It's not something Union Gas is bringing us. It's an actual different term. So I'm going to open up the floor now for any conversation that you would like to have, counsel. Counselor Smith.
Tea. Sorry, just randomly turned off. I do think we, we need to take the opportunity to have that on social media and try to get that out there because there is a lot of great things that we, that we've done, including the Gainsborough Garage and the addition there. I think a lot of people have no idea what that facility looks like right now. If you drive down the road and look at it, it's there. You, you know what's happened. But if you, if you're not in that area of the county, you have no idea that that addition was put onto the, the building there. And that's just because of the work that you've done and making sure that we're in the county and not having just a Taj Mahal somewhere in the county. I think it's, it's an excellent plan that you've been able to, to work through for the last number of years.
Warden, and the, the only thing I'd add to that is the only time there's really been any media, like, it's almost been by stealth that this has happened. But the only time it's been any media, and it was an excellent article. Like, it was right around that early part of 2020. There was a story in the Free Press about the work we were doing on virtual at the time about how we could, and, you know, very fortuitous, it was a couple of months before because everybody was taking credit for being able to do it after that. But it was a really nice article about how we had done virtual work in the Free Press. I'll go back and find that. But we do have a lot of work to do to explain because you would not believe the number of times I get questioned by people that have really good knowledge of the county about what are you going to do with all those people? And I say, well, you know, look at the building, like, because they know about the county building being sold. I said, look at the building now. There's nothing in nine and 10, nothing in the Middlesex room, nothing in the basement, and then, well, records. And then you keep moving. And I go, all those people are already and have been. It's not like we need a plan. We've already implemented 95% of it. And it, I think you're right, Curtis. We just have to answer some of those questions because I think some people are waiting for us to say, okay, we're going to build that Taj Mahal you're talking about, and this is where everybody's going to go. And we've already done a lot of that work. And, and we will work on communicating that.
Thank you. And then just, you know, as part of the conversation, it's my job of Chair of SCORE. I was just in Paris the other day because we try and rotate our meetings. And the council chambers in Brandt were basically renovated and, and was a very good price for what they had. And I think those opportunities will be out there. Maybe not right now, but they will be out there. And I was very, very impressed by what they had been able to accomplish through this building. So, you know, it's, it's nice to look forward to something like, opportunities like that. Synergy. It'll all be about synergy at the end of the day. All right. So I have any other questions or comments before I ask for the motion that this presentation be received for information? Okay, looking for a mover. Brad, oh, sorry. Counselor Richards, you're on. And seconded by Counsel Elliot, all in favor. So moved. Now moving on to 11A5, post-election committees and boards. And again, CEO Rayburn, this is yours.
Okay. I, I brought this forward simply because we're going to step a little bit outside the norm. And what I mean by that is normally we do a lot of work on preparing for boards after the election or just before the election. And we were talking earlier today, Allison, about just the long lead time there is between the election and it's unprecedented. I don't remember a time when it's been this large. And I, I think I have to get out in front of getting committees and boards put in place for a lot of reasons. We're going to be walking into budget season, like, almost immediately after we get our new group. And the crassly thinking about the ambulance side, I think we're going to be under pressure to provide a budget very early for that group. And so there's a lot of things I'd just like to get ahead of instead of waiting till after the election. So let's walk through this, Greg. We'll just take a little look at, and sometimes we forget, like, there's a lot of council committees and boards that we have to populate that are out there. Marcy did the right thing by putting et cetera because there's some other ones that we clearly left off that list, not on purpose, but because we just didn't remember them all. So one that Kathy mentioned is the Ontario Health Team, which we can talk about as well. But there are a lot, and they, they need to get populated fairly early. So let's keep going, Greg, and we'll take a look at. These are the ones that I'd like to get out and start advertising for as early as possible simply because they have citizens' appointments or other types of appointments. So those ones I'd, I'd want to get out in front of. If we wait till after the election, advertise, then go through a review of you folks, we could be into the middle of January. Well, if it's a 30-day window, we could be into the middle of January, late January, and think about where we are in the budget cycle at that point for all of these groups. I just have to get ahead of this. So then the next group is really, that we have to think about is, what, Greg? Oh, long in action period. I talked about this and budget season. So well, then we'll talk about the next group we have to look at, Greg. And that is council appointments to committees. So I really want to try and hit the ground running where I can give you at that December 13th meeting a list to look at and approve. That would be perfect for me if we could get there. Because if you think about that Christmas break, I don't really have anything after that to sort of get in touch with you. So I have, we're going to know who council is. I can start sharing information with you and get that ready early so that there's a decision to be made, hopefully, for that first full meeting of council in December. Let's keep going, Greg. I, I did make this recommendation just because I think it would be good to have a striking committee for council committee appointments. We don't, we won't know, we, we will know very before the 13th meeting who the warden is going to be. I forgot the date, Marcy, but anyways, you know. Oh, oh, I said I wasn't going to ask you a question. Shoot, I'm sorry.
The inaugural date?
Yes.
Is December 8th?
December 8th. So then I'm thinking between December 8th and that time period, there could be a striking committee, just to balance it out. And the striking committee would be composed of the warden and the most immediate past warden on council. If there isn't other people to, like, if there isn't a most immediate past warden on council, no, we are, we only know of three members so far, and none of them are past ward. And so if that doesn't happen, then we'll just ask council to nominate and make somebody for a striking committee. But the plan going in, in terms of efficiency and speed is, warden, whoever that is elected, and the most immediate past warden to sit down and look at where everybody wants to be and establish that so we can hit the ground running on December 13th. That's my recommendation. And that's what I'd like to put in our, in our procedure because that's not there now. Our procedure right now is to place that burden on one person. And it might be best to spread that burden out a little bit this way. And then, so yes, oh, good. So we're going to proceed with recruitment for the other positions. for the other positions, and we're going to be doing that a variety of different ways. But I'd like to get started on that with a a closing date just after the election and before the first meeting of the new council. I think just after the election is a really good time. It gives people, there'll be many people that will be interested in these committees that may be running locally that if they're not elected, then they may want to do this. And and I think that's an excellent idea, because it's it's a great opportunity to learn more about it. If you want to try and run again next time. So like, for example, library board, it's always been a great entry point into running for something broader. So if I was to close it off before the election, I'd be disenfranchising that group, and I don't want to do that. So I'm thinking just after, like, maybe four or five days after the election. Well, could be a week, gives us a lot of time to sort of get ready for that December thirteenth meeting. And I think that's it.
Great. So, question, councillor Burkhardt-Jessen?
Thanks. Um, thanks, Warden. Just on that note, Bill, because we've had that conversation in our own municipality about engaging candidates that aren't successful and how to keep them engaged. So I'm totally on board with keeping that window open, but make sure that somehow we do engage with those, whether it's just a generic mailer that goes out to all candidates, just so that they keep that in mind. In, you know, if if they're not successful, their mind might not necessarily turn right away to be, you know, I want to be part of the library board or something. But I think we need to find a way to communicate with them that that is um an option available to them.
And we've done a, I think we've got a good start this year, because for the first time in my memory, we have a list, like, we're not in charge of elections, so we don't always necessarily have email address and everything for people that are running. But we have a good list this year. You probably already saw our orientation, Middlesex County, introduction to Middlesex County that went out to all candidates that could be here. We're going to talk a lot about orientation next next meeting, which is not that far away, actually. We're going to continue with the orientation for people, even people that aren't on council yet, just to keep educating them about different things. But for the first time, I think Marcy and I have a great list that we can engage people. Because if they show a level of interest that's great enough to run for for council, then it's a level of interest great enough to be on some of these other committees and provide meaningful feedback. So I agree. We'll get on it, and we're prepared for that.
Councillor Smith?
Middlesex Paramedic Services Board is to have it so then you have a rotation of, say, the public appointments. I guess this is more specific to the library board and, say, the assessability advisory committee. To make sure that instead of every four years, you can have a whole new slate of members on the library board. And if we were to rotate it that, say, if when we go to appoint people in twenty twenty-three, that you have somebody on for one year, and then somebody on for two years, it's gonna be on for three years, that they all don't come due at the same time, and you have a flow of candidates, uh members on those boards. Because I could foresee sometime after an election that you could have all new county councillors and all new public appointments in those committees, and it's going to be very hard to get everybody up to speed for some of those committees and boards. Uh, so just something I want to throw out there. And the other uh one that I've mentioned as well, I think I mentioned this a while ago at a meeting, is at the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus, I think that we should engage with them to see if they'd be willing to change their bylaws to allow for one member of county council to sit at the Wausau Board, along with the sitting uh warden as well. And then that'll allow the continuity of one member of Middlesex to be always at the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus with the current warden that's sitting also tagging along as well. But it allows that continuity, because with the warden being only elected for one year in Middlesex, it's hard to really get that warden up to speed, and having one person there for the full four years, I think, would be a great idea.
So, Warden, just on that last point, um we will have to engage with Western Ontario Wardens Caucus, because I think, as Curtis mentioned, maybe, that's not the current practice. So we'd have to ask them to change their incorporation bylaw to allow that. But I think that's that has been a conversation point in the past, and it's a great opportunity now to bring it up again for this next term. Now is the time to do that, not a year from now to do that. So um that certainly is on our radar screen unless council has any objection to it.
Okay, anything else? If not, then I have a motion that the post-election committees and boards presentation be received for information. Councillor DeVet, seconded by councillor Brennan, all in favor. So moved. Now, moving on to eleven B, and that'd be the action items. First one is eleven B one. Exemption for a proposed plan of condominium, which is Lucan Woods Township of Lucan Bedawf, file number thirty-nine T L B C D M two-two-zero-one. And I look forward to our Director of Planning and Development, Dirk, to bring this forward.
Thank you through the warden. This is an unusual one, in that you've already approved this development essentially previously. In the sense that this is the the three apartment buildings that are being developed right behind the township office. It was, however, to be one plan of condominium, and for some business and finance reasons, the developer is now seeking to have three separate plans of condominium. So it's a technical thing under the Planning Act and the and the condominium legislation, but it's different than what county council had approved previously. So we brought it back before Lucan Bedawf Council, and just out of caution, back before county council. But in the end, it is no different than the physical development that was proposed before. So I am recommending approval, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councillor Richards, did you hear everything there? Okay, good. Just maybe me that can't hear it as well, because it just doesn't get up there. But I've got the gist. Councillor Vanderheiden?
I threw you to Dirk, just a quick question. So the recommendation in there says from full condominium approval process. And that always, that always makes me nervous, because then I always think, well, what are we missing that we didn't do, even though you just said, and I read the report, and it looks like everything's exactly the same, only one tiny bit of a difference. So can you reassure me that there's not something that, because we shift things this way, that we're not doing the full scope that we have to do in order to move forward?
Yeah, through the warden, um, the the full condominium approval process is really like a plan of subdivision and and, uh, you know, a draft plan approval conditions and uh implemented through that, through a subdivision agreement or a condominium agreement. The condominium legislation in the Planning Act does acknowledge that there are often cases where those matters are already dealt with. In this case, it would be a site plan agreement. So that's already registered against the property, implements all the technical things. And so then the the full condominium approval process is essentially redundant, or will be a redo of that other process. So um our our analysis on this is, was there a Planning Act public meeting? So in this case, there was the zoning bylaw. Mind you, it was a number of years ago. Uh, and then, second of all, is there another mechanism or another uh planning approval registered against the property that implements all the matters that need to be taken care of? And in this case, it was the site plan. And that's why I I just maybe allowed uh add a little bit. And that's why we did take it back before Lucan Bedawf Council, because it does change when you have three separate properties beside each other, there are some interrelated things like parking standards, zoning compliance setbacks between those those property lines. Again, you all sort of see when you just drive there. Uh, there are some things like underground servicing and easements and such. And so I wanted to make sure that Lucan Bedawf Council was aware of those changes. So yeah, it is my opinion, there are no real changes. There's nothing being um sort of gotten around or superseded by exempting projects like this from the condominium process.
Any other comments? Nope. If not, then I have a motion in front of me that um County of Middlesex exempt plan of condominium, file number three-nine T L B C D M two-two-zero-one for two-three-eight-one-four-one-four Ontario, incorporated from the full condominium approval process. Councillor Vanderheiden, seconded by councillor Burkhardt-Jessen, all in favor. So moved. Anyone, no one was opposed? Oh, okay. Eleven B two, proposed plan of subdivision, file number three-nine T S C one-six-zero-one, and official plan amendment number fifteen, municipality of Strathroy Care Dock, Salisbury Developments and two-six-three-four-eight-seven-six Ontario Incorporated. Dirk, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Morton. Uh, this is a large development off of Salisbury Street, sort of the last, a large component at the northwest corner of uh Strathroy to the municipal boundary. And it would create three hundred and twenty-three single detached units, twenty lots for townhouses, free freehold townhouses, and also a medium density block uh that could accommodate approximately a hundred and twelve townhouses. In addition to the condominium, there's a technical matter, or sorry, the plan of subdivision, there's a technical matter that needs to be addressed in uh that they, there needs to be an exemption from the requirement for a secondary planning exercise. In this case, uh, the property owners have come together and done one large development proposal. So there is no in my view, and it's Rethra Care Dock's view, there's no need to do that secondary planning exercise, because it's sort of being done as part of this uh development proposal. So the lands are designated residential in the Strathroy Care Dock official plan. I won't go into a a lot of the details of the report, uh, and then, of course, attached also by the local planning reports. I will just highlight, this is one of those ones, uh, you know, the initial application was actually in twenty sixteen, different developer. There was substantial changes through that process. This is one of those ones where if it continues this way, the refunds and whatnot, we'll have to look at that. But obviously, the timeframes weren't met. Having said that, I do think it's a better proposal. What actually is proposed now meets a lot of the requirements, a lot of the concerns and comments from the public and the considerations in terms of a second access that both uh county engineering and Strathroy Care Dock wanted. So I think it's a success in the end. A full agency ministry circulation was undertaken, and the conditions that are proposed, conditions that are attached, deal with the Conservation Authority, the municipality, and also county engineering for off-site uh matters. So in the end, I am recommending approval. I do believe it's consistent with the provincial policy statement and conforms with the county's official plan and Strathroy Care Dock's official plan. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments? Nothing? Okay. So there are two um different recommendations in front of you, council. And I'm not going to put you to the pain of reading them aloud to you. So I think everybody knows what they are. So again, I'm going to ask them to go together and that we uh look for a mover to accept them as presented. Who would like to move that? Kathy, uh councillor Richard, seconded by councillor Vanderheiden, all in favor. So moved. Now, moving on to the proposed plan of subdivision, file number three-nine T M C two-zero-zero-two, and official plan amendment number fifty-one. Middlesex Centre, Valley View Developments, and Dirk, it's all yours.
Uh, through the warden, this is deja vu all over again. At your last meeting, we essentially had the same application, and then there's two on this agenda. And it's a one development uh group that has brought forward three separate plans of subdivision, essentially for the remaining undeveloped lands within Poplar Hill Coldstream. It is uh different than we typically see in the sense that it's on the basis of individual private septic systems and wells. And therefore, there is an a attached official plan amendment. And I also think it's important to note that the Middlesex Centre, the municipality, undertook sort of a review of all three of these uh at the same time, and they used uh peer review engineering consultants to ensure that the septic and water on the individual lot basis wouldn't impact neighboring properties in that we didn't just look at it one subdivision at a time, that it was looking at that cumulative impact. Draft plan conditions are attached and address matters of the county engineer, the Saint Clair Region Conservation Authority, and of course, the municipality. And again, I noted that there is, there was an extended processing timeline as this engineering work went back and forth. And also, again, the developers uh changed on this as they were bought out by others through the process. So in the end, I think that the plan of subdivision and the official plan amendment itself is rather technical. But I do believe that it is consistent with the provincial policy statement and conforms with both uh York County Council official plan and Middlesex Centre's official plan.
Okay, again, um comments, questions, council? Councillor Burkhardt-Jessen?
Thank you. And through the warden, I I don't think I have a question. It's more or less comments, and they could be for this application and the next one that we're going to, that uh is going to be presented. You know, it's, it, we've had interesting dialogues over the last, you know, time I've been on council. We talk about intensification. And we talk about housing needs. And I understand, when I look at this map, why these proposed subdivisions are, the way they look, that they fit in with the community as it is. But I dare say we could all say the same thing about how our commu- our urban, more urbanized communities have changed over the years um with lot sizes. And, you know, we've heard extensively from the OFA about needs for intensification as recently as the warden's opening remarks, when she talked about um Wausi's um presentation at AMO about, you know, housing needs and how it has to look differently in our communities. And I guess I look at this and um, you know, this this council recently stayed with large farm sizes in an effort to stay away from, you know, creating estates. And I look at this and I think, are we really standing behind what it is that we've been saying all the, you know, for the past umpteen months? I I guess if I I guess if I did have one question, it would be, are the lot sizes, the lot sizes because of the septic needs? Or because of the need or the want or the desire for a large lot size, which in this day and age, I might go as far as to say is really entitled? So that would be my question, is why are they as large as they are? When, and I guess the point for anybody watching this is we have another application coming up that is a proposed um application for condominium on point-two hectares. And these lot sizes individually are point-two hectares.
It's all yours, Dirk.
Uh, through the warden, the lot sizes uh for all three of these plans are, uh, to my understanding, the smallest that they can be based on the soils and having individual wells and septics. And then in relation to the neighboring properties, of course, which is those setbacks and those separation distances.
Thank you for that clarification. I, you know, my my follow-up might just be, I think that we need to look at, and all of our municipalities are the same way. We all have areas um that are not serviced. But all of our OPs speak to development in areas where there is municipal servicing. So I think it's incumbent upon us to to look at at where we are, putting people and how we are putting them in the future.
Okay, any other comments? All right, so in front of me, I have a a lot, again, two-piece motion, looking for approval, subject to conditions, and also um an amendment. So mover? Councillor Brennan, seconded by councillor DeVet, all in favor. Okay, opposed. Let the record state to opposed. And so carried. So eleven B four, proposed plan of subdivision and official plan amendment number fifty-two, Middlesex Centre, Valley View Developments Incorporated. And again, Dirk, take it from here.
This is the same, um, just down the road, same developer, same analysis. And again, I am recommending approval. And do believe that is consistent with the PPS and the county's official plan and the local official plan.
Any questions about this one? It seems very similar to the other one. Okay, so then there are, again, two um recommendations in front of you. Looking for a mover, councillor Connealison, seconder. Councillor Robb, all in favor. Okay, and opposed. Okay, and motion carried. Now, moving on to eleven B five, proposed plan of condominium, file number three-nine T C D M M C two-two-zero-one, Middlesex Centre, C N L Group. Again, Dirk, whenever you're ready.
Uh, thank you, the last one here. Uh, so this, uh, and this was referenced already, this is an existing uh structure or development that is for uh townhouses that are currently in one ownership and are rentals. The, they are looking to convert that to a standard condominium, which essentially is for individual units, and then some common elements, uh, including the existing services that are on site. Middlesex Centre did support this proposal at their August meeting. And as it is really just the division of an existing property into four units, the review was really related to municipal considerations for the well and septics, et cetera. There's already a site plan agreement registered against it. And if you look at the proposed conditions that are attached to the report, they're relatively minor and really deal with those, the conversion of those technical matters related to the servicing. So um the, also attached is a local planning report, which goes into more detail. But from the county's perspective, I was satisfied that it is consistent with the provincial policy statement in both official plans. And it's really just the conversion of the tenureship from uh one property to four units, if you will. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions regarding this one? Seeing none, then I'm going to ask the recommendation in front, um, looking for a draft plan approval, and of course, with the conditions and the notice of decision. Looking for a mover. Councillor Richard, seconded by councillor Brennan, all in favor. So moved. I do have a note to our next one, which is eleven B six, a motion to defer the report December thirteenth meeting of county council as Brent is unable to attend today. So if council is in agreement with that, I'm going to ask somebody to move that we defer. Pardon? Yeah, yeah. What did I, I said September, didn't I? All these months. Um, so it looks like you are making the motion, okay? And uh seconded by councillor Elliot, all in favor. All right, moving on to correspondence and information items. So we have eleven C one payables, all the way through to eleven C ten. Any questions regarding those? We're lumping those ones together. If not, then I'm going to ask for a mover that items eleven C one to eleven C ten be received for information. Councillor Robb, move, seconder. Councillor Smith, all in favor. Opposed. Okay, nope. And all, um, that means it's carried. Then moving on now to eleven C eleven, all the way to eleven C twenty-five. Now, in those, is there anything a council would wish to talk about? Councillor Elliot?
Uh, thank you. And through you, uh, your worship, I just wanted to pull out eleven C twenty-five, the proposal for the Federal Electoral Boundaries Commission for the Province of Ontario. I actually had a call with MP Lindsay Matheson on my way to the meeting today as she was seeking feedback uh from from elected officials. um, as she was seeking feedback, uh, from, uh, from elected officials out in the county, specifically in Thames Centre, where, uh, a portion of Thames Centre is being proposed to be lumped into this London north eastern, um, area. And so she wanted feedback. And I think it's important, um, Middlesex County as a whole is being chopped up in this proposal. Um, Thames Centre is being split into three different federal ridings. Uh, North Middlesex and Lucan Bedaw have just been kicked out of any Middlesex riding. Um, and so I think it's important, there are, um, two consultations, um, and in-person as well as a virtual, uh, in September and October for the London region. And I think it's important, um, that possibly as Middlesex County as a whole, but also, uh, individually as elected officials, we get involved and share our concerns, uh, with this boundary and the impact that it will have on the county. One thing I've kind of always hated about our writing now is Thames Centre and all of Middlesex Counter, County, Thames Centre has been left, is in a whole other riding. Um, and one thing that I shared with Lindsay, uh, would be that my preference would be that the upper tier borders are respected in federal boundaries, that if we're going to have a Middlesex boundary, it includes all of the, Middlesex County as a whole. Um, additionally, one thing she pointed out, um, was how in Elgin County, where St. Thomas is now pulled out of the Elgin County riding, um, St. Thomas is the service provider for most of Elgin County. So really from, um, a service delivery standpoint, it doesn't make sense for advocacy. Um, and so I would really encourage everyone, right now, the in-person, um, uh, date for the London area is October 28th, which is unfortunately only a few days after the election. And I know that's one piece that, uh, Lindsay had mentioned, they're trying to advocate to adjust that date, um, just because of how close it is to the municipal election. But I would just pull this out for, uh, for us to really consider and provide some feedback on.
Uh, I'm going to go see Rayburn first and then Counselor Vanderheiden.
Oh, I don't want to go ahead of Joanne.
All right, Joanne, you got boosted to the top.
Oh, well, thank you. I just wanted to, um, highlight 11C18. It was very interesting to read the accommodation plan. And for anyone out there that, uh, that is interested in this at all, please go to the website and check this, this item out. It's actually a really good report. I thought, uh, it's very concise. It's, it's, it's got a lot of data. I love data. I think that's a great way to make, um, some, some decisions, not all decisions. But it also points out how the county is doing for, um, how many students are in each school, what schools are lacking in, in bums in seats, so to speak, um, and, and what, what is going on around us. And I, I think it's something that we need to really pay attention to. I know over the years, I've been on a number of accommodation review committees. I really, um, hated being on those because I always felt, and this is just my opinion, I always felt that the decision had been made before we even had our first meeting. And we lost a lot of good schools across the county because of that. So that was very, very frustrating. We, we, we spoke, uh, many of us have stood in front of the school board and said that this is not right. So we have to really pay attention when these replans come forward, that we don't miss anything because we want to make sure that our students have the best education they can and not by sitting on a bus for hours.
Uh, in response to that, I'm going to go to Counselor Elliott. Um, you got bumped again.
I have no idea where we are in this.
It's okay. I'll let you know in a second. Go ahead.
Sorry, I'll just follow up, uh, to the accommodation plan that, uh, Counselor Vanderheiden brought up. Um, this is actually the second accommodation plan they've released this year. This is a revised accommodation plan. The original accommodation plan had a lot of, I'll say misinformation and data, uh, specifically regarding the county. And I know, um, Thames Centre specifically, our planning, um, department, our CAO and Alison, sorry, Mayor Warwick, and myself met with the planning department at Thames Valley District School Board and shared our concerns that it didn't reflect, uh, what was happening in Thames Centre and the growth we were seeing in Thames Centre. Um, and magically from this meeting, I don't even know how it happened, but West Nysary Public School ended up as a capital project in 2023 for an expansion after that meeting. And so I would just encourage, um, all of the lower tier municipalities to go through that accommodation review, ensure that it's meeting your needs. And if it's not set up at a, a, a meeting with their planning department, because it was, it was an excellent meeting that we had.
Good comments. I don't want to drop the bone that we had before that you were going to pursue about, um, the boundaries.
I think it would behoove us to get some talking points that we can get to council for the next meeting so that we're all on the same page. Because that's usually how they divide and conquer. Oh, so and so from over here said this and so and so said that. The other thing too, that we'd likely add to those talking points is just how important that is for funding. It, it may not be terribly evident at the governance level, but at the administrative level, how often they use those boundaries for funding. And the more chopped up you are, the less likely it is you're going to get a full shake. So this is something, having Middlesex just within, we're, it, we're a victim of our own success. We're getting too big. Like in terms of our population and how we're getting divided up now. But having Middlesex all under one riding would be spectacular. And any opportunity we have to advocate for that, we should.
It's funny you talk about advocating. I do have an appointment with, uh, MP Vecchio tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock. So I'm happy to add any comments. If anybody wants to send anything to me before then, it was, it was prior, it was arranged prior to this announcement. But it, this announcement has overtaken the conversation now. So, um, Counselor Elliott?
Yeah, maybe just say the deadline to file, um, the date to file in which public hearing participation form is to be filed is September 25th. Um, so we do have a little bit of time to put together something, but.
Yeah, our next meeting's the, thirteenth. Yeah, so that's good.
So just, uh, from that conversation, I'm just going to ask, uh, do you want a motion? Okay. So, so regarding the 11C25, proposal for Federal Electoral Boundaries Commission for the province of Ontario, the motion would be that, um, we would propose to comment meeting that deadline?
I'm sorry, I'm going to circle back to CAO Rayburn. You were going to prepare something for the next meeting?
Sorry? Yeah. Yeah. Staff will bring a report. Okay. So, uh, so we will end up with two motions. We'll do this one first for the 11C25 staff report. So a mover for that would be Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Burkhardt-Jessen. And then now we have 11, yeah, C11 to 11C25. Oh yeah, sorry. I'm going to call that vote. All in favor? Thank you. So moved. And now moving on to the rest of the letters. 11C11 to 11C25 and we're receiving those for information. So again, looking for a mover. Counselor Richards, seconded by Counselor Elliott. All in favor? So moved. Any inquiries? Any new business? All right. So now I'm going to ask, the, first of all, I think I'm going to ask for two things. We're going to ask for a motion to go into closed session, but we're also going to ask for a five-minute, uh, recess. So we'll start with the, uh, motion to go into closed session and that the committee of the whole convening closed session at, 11, or sorry, 11, 338. It's all those 11Cs and 1125s. And, um, in order to consider proposed acquisition of land by the municipality, personnel matters about an identifiable individual and labour relations or employing negotiations in accordance with subsections 2392 B.C. and D. So a mover for that, Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Smith. All in favor? Okay. And now a motion for a five-minute recess. Counselor Vanderheiden, seconded.